All right, um, let's call the meeting to order and let's start with Mount Hope Road Parking Analysis. Mr. Lannis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before Dan gets started, I just wanted to provide a little bit of a lead-in. So for the past several years, the city has received a number of, I wouldn't call them complaints, but concerns from residents regarding parking on Mount Hope Road. The city kind of has haphazard signage along that stretch. And we really just haven't done a lot with it, just trying to mediate kind of short-term issues as it relates to that and asking people for compliance. But we've had an uptick related to parking complaints as you get further up Mount Hope Road. There's a new house constructed on the east side. And so we've had an uptick in issues. And so rather than kind of piecemealing this kind of back and forth, I asked the city engineer just to do an analysis on the entire stretch of Mount Hope Road. So right now, this is for the council's information. We are looking for some direction. If you're looking at making some changes, we would take the next step and invite property owners adjacent to Mount Hope Road to come into a future council meeting and provide some input before the council decided to make a change or not make a change. But prior to getting to that, I'll turn it over to Dan to give an overview of his study findings.
Well, good, uh, good evening. So I will, uh, I'll bring you back to a topic we've touched on many times over again. So you could probably tell me what the right answer is based on all the, all the things you've heard about street whiffs over the past five, five, six months. So it's really going to be a lot of the same. Like, I can tell you what we did is we went out and did some measurements. And that's, that's where this all started. We measured the road. What should it be? Right now, I believe there's, there's some parking that's, that's occurring on the south end of the road here, down near Old Carver Road here. But, uh, what we're really looking to do is just measure it and say, here's, here's by the books what the recommendations would be. So, um, what we found was the road is 26 feet on the, on the south portion here, up to about Skyview Lane. And then past Skyview Lane, it goes up to 28 feet. So if you recall from many of these discussions here, the, the 26 feet is kind of that magic cutoff where we get into the one-sided parking versus no parking. And it's, uh, greater than 26 feet is, is the threshold for allowing parking on one side of the road. And so you're, you're effectively just, just below that. So the south end of it really only meets the requirements for, for, uh, no parking at 26 feet wide. And then 28 feet to the north of Skyview is sufficient for parking on one side of the road. And that would really just be a matter of which side of the road you would choose. We defaulted to the, you know, fire hydrant locations is the most common practice. There certainly can be some discussion on that. But, uh, you know, typically speaking, you look at where the fire hydrants are, a lot of this is for fire, fire service. So try and keep that real clean for, uh, fire, fire departments. So we would, you know, recommend the parking be on the opposite side. So the figures that are presented to you show, show that as much. It's certainly subject to some comment and, and discussion. And part of that was contingent on the final review by the fire chief and public services group. So that is, that is the finding. So you would basically have no parking. At the south segment, that would be changing. That'd be posted differently than it is today. And on the, on the Skyview Lane to the south, it'd be, it'd be different. And then to the north of that, it'd be posted on one side of the road, no parking. And there is a figure in your packet that kind of shows why it's so tight. If you're, you look at that memo, there's an image in there that Brett wanted to kind of do a visual of really what, what it means when you have three cars lining up in a segment this wide. And so I thought, yes, that, that figure or that, um, image is not three large cars. They're three moderate-sized vehicles passing at the same time. And you can see a door would be taken off. So if, uh, if they passed a vehicle that was parked, opening their doors. So it is tight and that is the, that is the final. So I can open it up for questions.
So the one thing that I had when I saw this, as you mentioned, confirming the findings with the Public Service Director and the Fire Marshal, they have not officially received this yet?
No, no, they haven't. I mean, just informal discussion here at this point. So no, it is still subject to that final, final comment, period. This is just by the books.
So I have a couple of questions and comments. So yes, we have the figure here with the cars lined up and the door opening. I guess no matter where you park, most people should probably look before they open the door. So I guess to me, you could be in the parking lot at Target and open the door. So, and you should probably look to make sure you're not going to hit another car or you don't have someone passing. But, um, I worry about the business on the corner. We know that it has changed uses right now. But when it was busier as a coffee shop where the traffic was coming in and out, where would business patrons park? Let's say this went back to a coffee shop or something else that had a greater use than the insurance company that's going to be in there now? No solved to that at all?
I've always parked on Old Carver Road, to be honest, when I use that.
And I've always parked on this road. And you're slowing down as you're coming down the hill anyways. You know you're coming to a stop sign. I guess I didn't personally see any issues with it. Again, I mean, you, people should be, use their own common sense to look before they fling a door open into a road. Um, we can't help that sometimes, no matter where or when people are. But, um, did you hear a lot of complaints or issues when the coffee shop was open and people were parked on that side of the road?
There is roughly the same amount, I mean, here and there. I mean, I wouldn't say that we're getting dozens of calls. It's just been enough to the point where we wanted to get some council direction so that we can resolve this. And we're not, we're not, we're merely putting this out there as information. We're not suggesting that there's an alternative as far as parking. Your points are all well-taken.
Okay. I guess for me, when initially, I mean, this is a work session. This is why we're here to talk about it. When I look at it, we're right, we're right on the edge of 26 feet. You know, where it could kind of go either way. Another inch would put you over to the other side of the coin. I do worry about future uses in that building and businesses and having a hindrance to parking. You know, we want to talk about supporting our downtown businesses and making it viable for them. And I think that it would be very, um, I think it would be a hindrance to have absolutely no parking next to that building should the use change into something else.
So just so I'm clear, you're advocating for it to remain the same, the no parking on one side?
Correct, at this point, yeah.
What was that last part? No parking on one side?
It's, so it's currently no parking on one side.
Okay.
And there, you can't park on the church side?
Just in one area, so like...
From Skyview down?
Yeah, from Skyview down, you know, there's a couple of signs, right? On the west side of the street saying no parking. But there's nothing north of Skyview, right? And this width is suggesting that there only should be parking allowed on one side. So maybe it's just parking allowed on one side the whole way down?
I guess maybe I'm interpreting this wrong. That from here down past, I'll just call it the coffee shop, would be no parking on the road.
Right, that's the recommendation. But I think what you're suggesting is not that, but maybe allowing parking one side the whole way. But being consistent with our signage, maybe.
Right, exactly. Yep, that's it. I misunderstood what you were saying. Sorry about that.
Okay, no, 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 I'm there, okay. I like, I like that idea. I mean, it takes, it takes a step in the direction of being clear and consistent with what's, what are we allowing? And I have concerns about that coffee shop location and parking around there. And without really understanding what other parking is available to people. I don't know what parking is available on Fifth Street or Sixth Street or elsewhere along there. I don't have a really good understanding of the width of those streets and what's available if we don't allow parking along Mount Hope Road. And then, you know, if we have problems or we have issues or take another step.
Yeah, I mean, the other option right now that people have used in the past is parking on the county road.
Right.
In front of it. The other roads going up, I don't know the width of Fifth Street. I don't know what that was changed to. But I know that the Sixth Street east that's up there, that's a pretty good hike up the hill. I don't imagine that most people are going to park there and walk down.
I was just more thinking up, you know, because I mean, the, the no parking goes all the way up to Skyview. And I don't know about people visiting other residences or parking in the street along there.
And I think, you know, we haven't seen a lot, you know, so some of it you can do from past history as you get farther up. People aren't parking a lot on both sides because those streets do, excuse me, do, you know, take a right there on Seventh Street. But clarity, yes, of having them not kind of mishmashed all over on one side parking this side parking that. But, um...
So just for the, you know, we're talking about consistency and clarity. I think what we're saying here now is no parking on that east side of the street, north of Skyview. But then below that, it would continue to be on the west, well, let's call it the west side of the street. So are you all comfortable with changing it?
Oh, so flipping it midway, such that you can park on the west side, north of Skyview, park on the east side?
Right, that's the proposal, correct? Or...
He's proposing nothing.
North of, north of Skyview. Skyview, you're proposing parking on the west hand, the west-hand side, the west side of the street. Okay. So there's that. And the only other thing that I keep going back to, I understand wanting to be business-friendly, it's just that especially, it came to light, and we all remember it most recently, with the 2018 Street Improvement Project of sticking to these Fire Marshal-defined whiffs really, really closely. So that's kind of a...
I'd certainly want to hear input from Fire and Public Works. And that would influence my decision.
My thoughts are, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the idea of losing parking spaces south of Skyview Lane because I don't see anything in the plan of replacing what we'd be losing for parking spaces. So if there was a project aligned with it that gave us the number of parking spots that we were losing, otherwise I'm not as comfortable having no parking on both sides when you come south of Skyview Lane.
Parking's always been an issue in downtown.
Yeah, I, if I, if we, yeah, I would like to avoid losing any parking spaces. It's a balance too of being consistent.
And realistically, there's not going to be as much traffic at the insurance company as there was at the coffee shop. So there won't be as much demand for parking on that corner. I don't know if, from Fifth Street down, with an insurance company, that's going to be in there. I don't know where the current owner will park for the insurance. Would it be in the, right on the property?
There was a car parked there today when I went through.
I saw that too. I mean, I don't mind, if we allowed parking on one side of the street from Fifth Street South, I'm fine with that because that would give that business ample parking. But as far as all of, um, all of Mount Hope Road, I think from Fifth Street north up to Skyview, having no parking on both sides is a good idea. Just purely for, I mean, there's people that walk up there, not just drive up there. So I just, I don't have problems with no parking on both sides from Fifth Street up. But from Fifth Street down, they could, uh, they could park down there. That would give plenty of parking.
I like that. I think that's a nice concession to the business owner. Assuming that they would come and would say, yes, we want parking.
I like that idea too. I really do. I think it solves some problems with that steep hill and sightlines and things. But it allows the business to at least have a place for customers to come in because it could change to something else, you know? Nothing, right?
Yeah.
Says it'll stay in insurance forever.
And the parking will be on the commercial side of the street there. And then it'll switch over past Skyview when you can allow parking again.
Councilmember Henry, do you mean parking on one side north of Fifth?
No, no, nope. So from the, the corner up, it would be parking on the right-hand side. Then it would stop. There'd be no parking on either side of that street until you got up past Skyview.
We want this proposal.
Oh, I got you.
But parking allowed on the commercial side, south of Fifth. Assuming that's south, south-east.
Correct.
Got direction?
So what we do is we'll prepare a revised exhibit and we'll send that out to adjacent property owners and then invite them to your June 20th meeting. That's okay?
We're all good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I like it. And you guys have what you need from us?
We can, we can revise it and then we'll do our...
Okay, super. Thank you. Moving on to the compensation study, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a progression from our initial work session that kind of went into how the city's compensation study was initially built in 2013. So I'm going to breeze through a couple of these slides related to how we got here. But again, 16 full-time employees, we do have a collective bargaining unit. And so what we're, excuse me, the compensation plan doesn't cover our part-time folks. One of the new pieces of information that we added, we included an organizational chart. So here you can see our full-time staff in addition to what's our seasonal staff. And then we have some, a couple, or we have part-time in the city clerk's office. Fire is obviously all part-time. And then we have some custodial and seasonal in public services.
One question. So as we grow, so the firefighter, do you know their cap number is it 23 or 25? For how many firefighters they take on?
Uh, there isn't a limit.
There isn't a limit? Okay, so they were just kind of...
I think right now we're at 32.
Oh, okay. Oh, so the regular, the firefighters at 20. So they're, we're feel well-covered in the city at this point?
Yeah, so there, the fire, there's firefighters 20, the officers are additional.
Okay, so they're not included in any of that 20 number? Okay. Thanks.
We went over the goals, but I think one of the pieces that is important to remember is the pay equity compliance and that the system that we build needs to be tough enough to withstand variations where we aren't going to be found to be out of pay equity compliance. And so really what that means in its simplest form is you can't just change one piece to the entire program. You have to make sure that everything is equitable throughout the entire compensation program. And so when you look at someone's pay grades or more significantly grades, if you make significant adjustments, you really have to make them across the board so that they're consistent with one another. I'm going to skip through the pay equity, the, the pay grades. Again, that's a function of the job classification that we design for that position. So based on their minimum qualifications, their supervisory functions, budgetary and purchasing decisions, how they interact with the council and implement policy, work direction and so on. And then just their overall position requirements and job duties is going to be a function. And there's several different programs out there that grade positions. We use the, uh, the SAFE system that was developed by Springstead, which is now Baker-Tilly. One of the, the key pieces and it's, we really kind of keep pushing on this. And I talked to the collective bargaining union, or the union employees this week about it, as well as the department heads, is this concept of pay range. We have a step system and it's, sometimes it can be difficult to kind of put together. But the range is really the minimum and the max. So the basement and the roof of, you know, of the structure. And so when we talk about adjusting the pay range, the stuff in between is, is really what we're proposing is to be based on budget and market, et cetera. But the, the range that you're adjusting is what we're suggesting is a range. It's an adjustment to the minimum and the maximum and not necessarily an adjustment to an individual employee's pay. Because the study that was done was a study based on the ranges in our peer cities, not on pay of individual employees in our peer cities. Does that ring true to everyone? Okay. Again, so this slide kind of matches it up. It looks at the range and not the position pay in this example of the finance director. And so market analysis of our peer cities, kind of looking at primarily the west metro located on the edge of the metropolitan area. We also added some additional data, looking at population, the number of full-time employees and the number of new home permits in 2018. Just to kind of give you a flavor of how we compare to the cities involved in the study. So our existing pay grades, so here you can see for our full-time employees, the number of positions that we have. And so you can see like Public Services Tech 2 and 3, we have two folks at those positions in addition to the administrative assistant. Now, we'll use this study in, in our negotiations with the union. But as it relates to immediate council decisions, it's not going to impact the union in that their pay is subject to a collective bargaining agreement, which the council eventually approves. But this isn't in any way a kind of a precursor to negotiations with them. We want to respect that process. So this is that pay range system or pay system. And so you can see here that if you look at the grades and then you look at the steps, there's a correlation of, you know, each step is 2.75%. And there, it's a, the same increases going down to grade. And so as you go from grade one to grade 20, they're all incremental. And so it's, it's, it's kind of like a puzzle piece. If you pull one of them out, it's not going to work. You won't be able to put the whole thing together again. And so that's why it's important to look at the entire system instead of just pulling out one number. So what we're working on is really frankly eliminating the step system as it relates to the exempt employees. And we do have to respect the upcoming negotiations for the, the union folks. But we're really trying to, to push on this idea of the open range where we establish the minimum, excuse me, and the maximum pay. So you can here see what that looks like for a 5.1% range adjustment, not to be confused with a 5.1% adjustment for someone's individual pay. And so we put together some sample slides. So if you look at this current employee, this is an example of someone who would be at grade 10 if they were making just under $61,000. You can see the range identified in the minimum and the maximum. And that's would be the current pay. If the council would agree to adjust the range, you wouldn't necessarily be increasing that employee's pay. You'd be increasing the minimum and maximum. And then that pay increase in this instance would be subject for 2020 to budget, collective bargaining process, any number of factors that wanted to be included on an annual basis. And so what we're really trying to get at here is our existing system is kind of, is more mechanical. Where a step is 2.75 and then we've used a calculator that's on the Minnesota, or excuse me, Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank's website that indicates inflation. And so we've stuck those two numbers into the machine and it pops out 2.75. And let's say inflation is 2%, 4.75. And it's, and I think that has worked traditionally because, you know, we've had some bandwidth in our budget to accommodate that and we've had a smaller staff. But frankly, as we grow and as budget constraints grow tighter, we're not going to be able to function with a system that can kick out a 5% to 6% budget increase. And to the contrary, there could be times where you, the agreement with the union and the exempt employees, you want to provide a 3.5% increase. But the step is only 2.75 and there was no inflationary increase. And so we're, this system, we think promotes the idea of being flexible and reacting to what the market is, what the budget is, what the needs of the city are, rather than what two calculators tell you the increase should be. And so we think that this reflects that. And so what we're suggesting or recommending to the council is similar to Springstead's findings, adjusting the pay range, again, that's the minimum and the maximum pay for each grade by 5.1%. The consideration of the actual pay increases would be incorporated into the annual budget. So we propose something as we do with a whole list of other things within the budget, have the council provide some feedback. The future pay range, so again, that's the minimum and the maximum. We would use that CPI calculator to determine how that minimum and how that maximum should be adjusted. But eliminate the step system, so the built-in 2.75%. In a year, it might end up being the 2.75%, but then it's a factor of organic decision-making and not necessarily a reflection of this is what the, the step says and this is what the CPI says. Now that, I should, I should note that the collective bargaining unit may want a step system and we're going to have to work through that and figure out what system applies to them. But we, we can operate into, into two systems. I do think that there is a, the, on the plus side to the open range system, I think it frankly sets out a first step towards working towards a performance pay system. We're not prepared to build a performance pay system right now. I think that will take a lot of work and we want to be really thoughtful with it. But I'm not going to try to whip up something within the next couple of months. We want to see what's out there, kind of build it from within. I really have a hearty discussion on that. But this is kind of the first step to providing some type of performance standard or metrics for like how to, how to grade, how people should get performance pay. And then the final piece is there are, there are two positions, one being the billing official and the second being the utility billing clerk. So when the, the ranges were, um, compared with peer cities, there are two positions, these two, that were outside of, they're over 10% as far as range difference. And so rather, to my point of you can't just involve an individual or move an individual piece without kind of wrecking the whole system. When your, when the range is that great, great, great of a difference, the, the result would end up being to move them up in a pay grade. And so what we're suggesting is, and we'll be talking about it later in my city manager updates, but putting together a budget amendment along with a whole other list of things. But there's about a $2,000 general fund impact to move forward with adjusting those grades for those positions. And so in an act of kind of good faith to try to move forward with that, we're suggesting that that be done as of July 1st and adjust their pay grades and with the requisite pay increase. So I'm happy to answer any questions on any of these items or areas that I didn't cover.
So as you and I have talked, I mean, I like, I like this approach a lot with the pay ranges, eliminating the steps for all the reasons that you stated about flexibility and, you know, our budgeting. So I support all the recommendations. The, what I just want to make sure I understand is a little bit of the logistics of it. So let's say we go ahead and we approve these range adjustments. When would they be effective? So like, kind of walk me through kind of the, into when would we budget? When would that take effect? When it, would it actually impact employees?
Sure. So the impact would be January 1st of 2020.
Okay.
The discussion would be a function of the 2020 budget process. So I think it's the, I want to say the first meeting in August would, excuse me, come with a preliminary budget.
Okay.
And so we'll go over, you know, law enforcement, fire, we'll have a section on personnel. And let's, you know, we'll pick X percent for the increase for the exempt employees. I would show you what the impact is to the general fund. If you need, want some more information, we can put that together. But then as all the items within that 2020 budget bucket are reviewed, there's going to be some that you're like, eh, we need to add more here, take off some there. And then as we, as the council sets the preliminary levy in September, that becomes kind of the, you can't raise it, you can only lower that. And then when you adopt the 2020 budget in December, then the next step is to go ahead and then, you know, have those implemented as a part of the budget in January of 2020, so...
That's kind of what I thought it would be. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Now, the one-off to that is, so I'm, I'm suspecting sometime in June, we'll have our first negotiating session with the collective bargaining unit. And so that's kind of a whole nother ball of wax. We'll negotiate, the council has the, and we'll make use of it. We have the opportunity to have closed sessions so I can update you on the negotiating process. And we'll start to talk about pay and compensation and how that's done. But the, and I, the message I gave to the union group last week was, we want a pay to be a reflection of what we mutually agreed to based on value and affordability and budget and not a reflection of the system. And so right now, we have a system in place where we have a number and the system tells us how to, how to get there. We want to come up with a number and then build a system around that number and so...
Turn your phones on.
But the pay is a, is only one part of the negotiation process. There's, you know, insurance and paid leave. And so it's all going to be a function of, you know, negotiations frankly. And so that'll too will be effective January of 2020. It's just going to take a different route to get there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Was this put together in 2013? The, the one that, the current system?
So the, yes, the current, what you see.
The whole step, step, I know it was a painstaking effort.
The current step in grade, but then the, the whole system has been increased by the Consumer Price Index on an annual basis.
Right.
And so what happens, if you look at, let's say, step six of grade one, that 37,000, under like the traditional method, you would say, well, we're going to just add 5.1% to every one of those steps, step one through nine. But the data doesn't support that. The data says that your minimum, the 32,000 is 5.1% too low, and the 40,000 is five, 5% too low. It doesn't suggest that every step within the system is 5.1% off. And so that's what we're trying to really kind of get at here is, I think building a system upon that logic frankly puts councils in a position where you don't want to do salary studies because it's like, the, the information that you got isn't reflective of the adjustment that you're making. And you end up with, if you do a 5.1% adjustment and a 2.75 step, you're talking about seven to eight percent increases every time you do a compensation study if you're falling behind a little bit. And I don't think anyone is asking for that, even though probably everyone would accept that as a result.
Brian, you wouldn't.
But yes, to your question, this was, the grades and the steps were established in 2013. The, the numbers are different.
It's been evolving just from CPI. And is 5.1% low? Is that what I'm hearing?
The, I'll go back to this. So the, the minimum and maximum for grade 10, they're saying that the minimum and the maximums for the entire system should be adjusted by 5.1%. So that means you, the ceiling and the, and the basement are both adjusted up. But the, the middle, unless you are at the minimum or the max, the mid, the middle stays the same. And frankly, even if, so if you were at the max in this situation, so if, let's say you're being paid 67,945, and the council agrees to adjust the scale up to 71,000, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to jump to the 71,000. You're going to jump to the percentage that the council agrees within their budget. And that could be 5.1%, but it also could be three and a half or four, depending upon what your comfort level is.
So just that I'm understanding this, the pay range grid would go away? And the ceiling and the floor would go up by that 5%?
For the exempt employees.
Correct, correct.
For what?
The exempt.
So that, it's the department heads, the public services superintendent, and myself.
And then while we would certainly talk about this in the budgeting process, I know we've got a number of folks who are at the ceiling of their pay grade. Those folks would potentially go up 5.1% plus whatever increase we decide next year?
Nope.
No, okay.
So they state, so if you use this example, they're at the 67,945.
Yep.
They'll go up to whatever percent increase the council agrees to.
Okay, okay.
It's just that the ceiling is higher.
Okay.
If you, if you approve the increase at 5.1%, yes, they'd be at the max. But that won't always be the case.
And then we would review the minimum and the maximum every year?
Correct.
And get a little bit away from those folks who are at the ceiling of their pay grade, potentially?
Well, there could be, let's say there's somebody who's 2% below the pay, below max pay, and the council agrees within the budget process to increase the salaries by 3%. They're going to, their ceiling's going to be at 2%. They'll only be able to go up to 2%, to 3%. It's only going to be for the folks that are in the middle of the range.
Okay.
So they'll be capped. You can't make any more than the maximum within your range.
Gotcha. Thank you. And I think, you know, it's, the framework is essentially to provide a framework for it, make sure that we're paying our employees competitively, right? The range reflects the competition, other cities, right?
Got it.
A minimum and a high, depending upon, all of those things you listed, experience, responsibilities, et cetera, et cetera, right? And so we want to make sure our employees are within that range. We want to make sure the goalposts are the correct ones, right? And our employees are within that appropriately.
Brent, I have a couple of questions. So have you looked at other cities on our list that we compared with or went to for their information about performance pay? Do any of those cities do that?
I know Victoria has the open range I'm not familiar with. Well, I know Waconia and Delano have, are on the step, step system. I'm not familiar with the other cities.
Okay. I'm just curious as to how people have found the success or the, you know, I guess, problems with it if they've gone to that. So if Victoria, I mean, do you talk with Victoria very often? Do you know how theirs has been going?
Well, they don't have performance pay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're doing what we're suggesting here is an open range system.
Oh, okay.
And I, I, when I can, we can proceed with the questions. I'm not proposing a performance pay model now.
We could potentially go to it.
I'm just, what I'm saying to the council is I'm interested in studying it and talking to the employees about it and the council about it and seeing, does it work for us or not? But I'm not suggesting that even within a year's time that we'd have something to present to you. It's not something that I could write on my own, and I, it's not something that I'm willing to like make a mistake on. I want it to be really good, and I want a complete buy-in from the group so that we have something that we think really works well. But to your specific point, I, there's no cities on here that I'm aware of that use performance pay. The only cities that I'm aware of that use it are, and one of them isn't a city. One is Chanhassen, one is Carver County. But I'm not, and I know Waconia and Delano have a step system and not an open range. Victoria has the open range.
Okay. So just to make sure I'm clear on the open range. So that allows you, I mean, maybe I'm confused here. So if you have the open range, how do you decide then what percentage you're giving us the raise?
The council decides.
The council decides that alone, okay.
It, it, and then frankly, the council decides on a step as well.
Okay.
The difference is, it provides more flexibility in that, so I'll go back to the steps. This shows it. So if, if I was on, let's go to grade 20. I was at step one and I was going to go to step two. Right now, the current system really confines the council, and I believe staff and the employees like, to 2.75%. So we don't talk about half steps or quarter steps. It's 2.75% and whatever the inflation is, and that's, it's a system. We could come back to you and say, we think we can afford 3.25%. Well, the system right now doesn't have a way to let us do that. And so we'd come to the council and say, we, we think we can afford 3.25%. Here's the, here's the budget impact. And you, as the council, would say, oh, that's too heavy, or, oh, we'd like to, we'd like to put more into that. We'd like to have that be 3.75. So it's, it really provides the council with the, not that you don't have the complete authority, but you, you're not bound by a system other than what the minimum and the maximum are. So you can make it, you know, 1%, 5%, 4%, 4.25, and it's not a, it's not based on a calculation. So there has to be some more thought put into it, instead of just saying it's the, because for, since 2013, it's been whatever, it's been a step and whatever inflation says. And frankly, there hasn't really been a whole lot of discussion on salaries in, since 2013. So for the past five years. And so that can be a really good thing, right? Or it could be a very anxiety-ridden thing, like, why aren't we talking about, you know, a budget factor that, you know, is a big piece of our operational costs? And that doesn't presuppose that we shouldn't be investing in that. It just means that this system provides more flexibility determining what the amounts are rather than sticking it into a calculator. But there will probably have to be a higher degree of analysis over what that number is and what the council supports within that.
Okay. I have one more question then. When we're talking about the union and our union contracts. So historically, we have matched the union with our pay for non-union employees. If we start looking at having two different systems for union and non-union, is that what I'm hearing?
You could do that. I, you, you could have two different systems, but the results could be the same.
Okay. I just, if they're, if they're not matching, we have employees working on one system of pay and another working with the union because I, and I don't know exactly what the union's going to come after and looking at this year. But I just don't want to create this sort of divide that one section's getting this, and then the union section is getting this.
The minimum and the maximums will be the same. It's just a matter of how you get there.
Right. And so the, yes, the minimum, maximum. But when we're talking about in the middle, I just, and moving people along with different raises, I just want to be really careful of not creating divides within employees, within the city because they're on two different, two different sections, I guess.
So I guess I'm not clear.
Well, when, and like I said, I'm, I'm just trying to weed through this, so to make sure I'm understanding. So we're talking about the union and what they're going to be negotiating for. Are they going to be, the union pay is going to stay on the, the step system? And they're not going to the open range? Or we're going to look at doing the same for everyone?
We don't know. I mean, it's, it's part of the negotiation.
Right. I've, and this is total speculation, but I, the union may want to stay on the step because it's more guaranteed for their, the union employees that they're going to get this and this and this. It's that kind of, that safety, we're going to do this and this and this. So how are we going to handle it if, if they're coming back one way and, and they don't budge? And then we have a different idea for the non-union employees?
For me, for me, the, as long as the result's the same, the system, I mean, if, if the council agrees that you, you're okay with a 3.5% increase, to your point, there's, we're probably not in an environment where you're going to do something of 1%, 3, 5 for one group and four for the other group. It's going to, both are going to be 3.5.
Okay.
They'll just have two systems to, to get there. And you could turn around and say, well, we are going to adopt whatever the, the union has. You're not bound to, to that. It's just you have, you're going to have more constraints within that. But I, part of your question is, I don't know the answer to, to what they're going to propose.
And it's one thing to look at, like I said, at minimum and maximum, but there's a whole lot of space in between there, and, and it's people's pay. It's their income, it's their livelihood. So I don't want to just think about the max because it can take many, many years to get to just the max. So I want to make sure that, not just for the current employees, but employees that we may hire, that we are in a good range period in the, in the middle there also.
Glenn? All right. Did you get what you need from us? You have the direction?
Just supporting your recommendations, at least. To move, so, so the next steps is we got to negotiate with the union, right?
If I heard from the council, like, you know, the 5.1% range adjustment was totally like, you just weren't there.
Oh, no.
But this isn't something that I feel compelled or I don't think we, because we're not making any changes right now to bring to the council and say, let's officially adopt the 5.1.
Right.
You will see on the June 20th agenda, a recommendation within the budget resolution to adjust the 2019 budget to accommodate the pay grade changes for those two positions. But beyond that, to council member Mox's point, I think it, we'd be prudent to see how negotiations play out and see how these two can be married together.
I'm glad to hear that that, getting in compliance with those two employees is coming forward. I think that we need to be there, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm glad that we're not wasting any time on that.
All right. Moving on to the Recreation Partnership Survey, Mr. Merrick.
So based on, excuse me, our last discussion regarding our Recreation Partnership with Chaska, I've drafted five sample questions just to get, to get the conversation started. We would like to try to keep it short. We've, have fallen when we've done survey questions or reached out to residents. The more questions we do, the less likely they are to fill it out. So we wanted to keep it somewhat short. But I'm open to as much feedback as you have there. The five questions are as follows. I find value in the City of Carver's partnership for resident rates at the Chaska Community Center, Town Course, and Curling Center. You can see all the way from very much disagree to very much agree. Number two, I find value in community events put on in the City of Carver such as the vehicle fair, movies in the park, concerts in the park, and so on. Number three is what community events would you like to see organized that currently are not being offered? Number four, where do you prefer to attend recreation program offerings such as yoga, art classes, kids' park programming, and so on? And this kind of gets into the number of programs that are held in the city. So do they prefer them to be in Carver, in Chaska? Does it matter to them? Do they not attend these event, or sign up for these events? And then finally, what recreation programs would you register for if offered? So again, these are to get conversations started. If you have additions, deletions, suggestions, happy to take them.
So when you're talking about survey, this would be like a Survey Monkey, like Erin's previous, okay.
Correct.
Um, just my thoughts of it for number two, and this is wordsmithing because it's me. I thought it would be important to say, take place in the City of Carver instead of put on in the City of Carver, just so that's just a little bit more clear.
And more consistent with question four regarding location.
Good call, good call.
I like your alignment.
My, I also thought, again, because this is Survey Monkey, and if we're pushing this out on Facebook and Facebook has a broad reach, is there any metric that we can tell with Survey Monkey as to where the people live? Or should that be a question, do you live in the City of Carver?
Yeah, well, to my, the last time I did one, I'd maybe defer to Erin, but I think you can, we can require an address be put in.
An address or a zip code?
Address.
Ooh, yeah, let's get that.
And you can filter out with just the Carver proper addresses? Because obviously the postal address is out in the Highlands, say 55315.
If you do 55315, that gets into the township areas.
Does it make sense, though, if we're looking at saying put, or, I'm sorry, what was your wording? For community events that take place?
Uh, take place, yeah.
Take place in the City of Carver? You know, we do pull people from the townships that come in. Is that valid information? I mean, if we're bringing, some of these events are free, but some of them are paid for. So is it, is it a valid question to, to see who's coming from where? And if they're coming from the townships into Carver for these things?
As far as surveying them?
Well, if you're on, let's say you're on Facebook and you come across it, and I live in the Carver Highlands, there's a lot of people there who identify with, I live in Carver. And so I could see them filling out the survey, but they may also come to Carver and take place, or I'm sorry, take part in the vehicle fair or go to the movies in the park. So just a thought.
I don't disagree with that. The only basis for, for my offering just the City of Carver is I've, I've had at least 10 conversations with Delgrin Township residents since the partnership, where they have been disappointed that the city's resident rates don't apply to them when they go to the Chaska facilities. And we go, you know, they have a Carver address, and I explain the property tax function, et cetera, so.
Property Tax 101.
I'm not opposed to that. It's whatever the council's prerogative is. I just wanted to provide you with that perspective.
That was just a thought.
Well, and maybe we can divide the results, right?
Yeah, I think as long as we include that additional question of, what's your address? Do you live in Carver? I would probably prefer to get an address. But then we can kind of split the results. Because I think what we're getting at here is really, we're looking for this feedback is to, should we do this again in 2020?
Yeah, and what should we do? Should it just be the reduced rate, the resident rates? Or should we also include programming, and if programming, what is it?
And at, at the risk of being really harsh, just for our purposes, it's great if Delgrin Township is in favor of this for us, but we're paying for it, so.
That's true.
You know, but I don't think it hurts if we have that qualifying question of, where do you live? What's your address in there? It doesn't hurt them pushing it out on Facebook and having the potential for other folks.
Would Survey Monkey allow us to just put a map where then they could kind of click on which location they live in? Because some might want the anonymous part of the survey, or it'd just be quicker to kind of do a zone that they live in versus address.
I don't, Survey Monkey doesn't have that capability as far as I know.
Well, and if we've done it before where we've asked for an address, people filled it out, okay.
Yeah, it won't prohibit someone from the township filling it out. It'll just.
Their address will be on there and so we'll know.
Where they're, where they're from. Or they could put an address that's in the city and not live in this. I mean, there, there's some scientific functions to this that you lose by going through Survey Monkey. And as long as we know that going into it, we're fine.
Okay.
Can I also ask that in question number one and number two, we start with positive, go down to negative in the order?
Yep.
Wait, what?
I noticed that too. Very much disagree.
I want to start with very much agree.
Oh, oh, a first option. Okay.
Not very much disagree.
Yes.
And the objective is to get over 300 of these, Erin?
Are there other questions that we think, I mean, we have five here. I don't think that's too many. If there was something that we wanted to add? Do you think there's other questions we should be putting in here?
Yes. In addition, well, the one that I thought of, in addition to the residency question, the other one that I thought of is a question of, um, use. How many times in the past year have you participated in, you know, golfing at the town course?
So we do, we did get numbers about who is getting resident rates, right? We got that data. I'm not sure we got good data on how many people are participating in the events. Am I wrong?
I don't know if there's a good way to.
I think we got the best that they could, but I think this could identify the folks and maybe, maybe let us dissect it a little bit. Like Joy says she's been to the community center zero times in the past year. So of course she's not for this.
Right, right. Okay.
I pay a lot of money to go to Lifetime, but that doesn't mean I go there a whole lot.
I pay not so much for the community center and Joy is my witness. I don't go there that often.
No, that's a, that's a fair question, right? How often have I participated in utilizing this partnership or participating events in the last?
And I don't know how we phrase that. I'm not necessarily.
So are you looking at trying to get at programming here or the, or the resident rates?
Yes. Just if they've benefited from the.
But do you want them to be separate questions?
Or question that maybe has the choices of weekly, monthly, quarterly?
No, I think it's a yes or no question.
Simplicity.
Wait, what, what do you think is yes or no?
Have you participated in?
Oh, just one of those.
We have a membership, but I don't know if I'd want to answer how many times I've used it.
Right, yeah. So no, I see what you're saying. Okay, yep. Have you used the Town Course Community Center?
So.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah, just part.
So have you, have you benefited or benefited from this?
Um, but to answer your question, programming or, I don't, I don't know that I feel strongly about that one way or another, if that's one question or two.
Based on the data that I think we heard from the Chaska folks, like, I don't think there's a question that folks are at least using the resident rates. I think the bigger, bigger question for the council is who's, who's registering for the programs?
Yeah.
Cause that's the kind of the add-on.
Who's showing up at movies in the park and.
But how, how do you take that count of numbers for movies in the parks? So they can't give us that number. So then we're going to ask them, have you participated in any of the following in the last year or how?
I would, I would probably gear it toward have you registered for a program. Cause the, you know, the vehicle fair and the, you know, the community events pieces, sometimes you do it and there's a whole ton of people. Sometimes you do it and there's nobody.
Well, and you don't get an exact number either.
And I think we should be really specific, like have you registered for a program that's taken place in the city of Carver?
Yep.
Right? Cause that's what we're getting at. Cause I could do yoga in the park, but it's not here.
Right.
Correct.
How do we feel about asking for age ranges too? Are you, you know, 18 to whatever, 40 to whatever? Together that.
What do you want to get out of it?
I don't know. I just, it, we don't have to certainly.
You're leaning towards certain groups or?
You know, I guess for me, it's kind of just taking a look at what age demographic is using it the most. Then we, yeah, you do know if it's, if I'm, you know, 25 and I go to all the, you know, classes here or the ones up at the school that they have or, I don't know.
No, we're asking pretty open questions, like what community events would you like to see organized? What recreation programs would you register for?
I don't necessarily, cause everybody who takes it's going to be 18 or older, right? You know, you would assume, um, probably predominantly female, probably, you know. We know the demographics of our commu, communities, so we can guess as to who that is. I don't.
If you guys feel it's not important, that's fine.
I don't feel strongly that we need to know.
I don't feel strongly either way. Just thought I'd throw it out there.
Simplicity.
Yes, Glenn, we've heard that.
And you will hear it because a lot of people, if it's the longer you get, the more detailed you get, the more they just space it out.
Right, no one's going to fill it out. Get charts up. A 10-question or less survey, somebody can hang out in four and a half minutes.
This will take you two minutes to answer. Yes.
That is nice to have at the beginning. When I do take a survey, I like to know that you're going to have 10 questions.
Yeah.
Or you're going to have four questions.
I know.
Or you're going to have 75.
Cause I got a survey that said it'll take me an hour and I was like, delete.
Yeah.
Sorry. I don't care what it is.
We've had a longer discussion about this than it should take to take this.
Correct. Okay. Are you good with the direction on that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right. Number five, the strategic plan, action plan update. Mr. Merrick.
Thank you, Mary Council. So this is our first update on our strategic plan, action plan. Um, so just wanted to kind of give you some background on what we've done since we met and adopted the study or the, uh, plan. Um, as it relates to funding partners for the certified levy, we've held the open house. Uh, we've also submitted a grant to the DNR for funding, um, reached out to local legislators. So I think we've done quite a bit. Later on this summer, I do want to kind of come back to the council and kind of regroup, if you will, and kind of put together a memo on what we've done and then kind of develop next steps.
Next steps, yeah.
Uh, the session's over, um, you know, what's kind of our, um, more detailed action plan for the levy as we move forward.
We can read it to you.
Do you want us to wait? Yeah, we've got it all in front of us.
I don't have anything.
Oh, okay. Identify redevelopment opportunities in the downtown, spring of 2020.
Yeah, that we haven't done anything on.
That's true.
I think one, uh, was related to franchise fees. So.
That was.
Uh, related to that and your long-term plan, you're going to be seeing some data from Steve McDonald. They, uh, did some research with some other cities and so you'll have an idea of what they collect. Basically provide some data. We'll also bring Larry Harris into that discussion so you can get an idea of kind of the framework. Again, that's not, nothing that you have to adopt, but it's providing you the information should, should you choose to pursue it. You'll also see the user-friendly format to report finance information. We put that as a target when we have our monthly finance meetings. So we've started the process for that. Um, we found some examples that we think will, uh, work a little bit better. Uh, we've included technology in our long-term financial plan. Uh, we've assembled all our, all of our information and we've sent it over to ABDO. So they're starting to, uh, process that. And then we have developed a, you'll see that in the, uh, there's a sheet right after, uh, these action plan updates within the packet. We created a form. Uh, we call it our CIP template where it provides all the information and then a ranking of priority, whether it's a basic or critical. Uh, but one of the things that I, I'm really happy with that is in the past, when we've done a long-term plan, we've frankly focused a lot on the numbers, which is important within the capital plan. I don't think we've done, spent enough time with the council on telling you what the projects are within the plan. Even though they're five years away, uh, we want to take some more dedicated time to talk to the council about, um, what are the components that lead you to the numbers that you're seeing? And so if there are, um, priority changes that you'd like us to make, then we have the opportunity to do that. I don't know if we've created enough space, uh, for the council to do that. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, the community survey, uh, connected with decision resources. And so they'll be coming out to your August 5th work session just to give you an overview of the, um, community survey process. Uh, they are used by nearly every city within the metro area and I'm sure there are other groups out there, but, uh, they're willing to come out here and present a proposal and answer questions, um, at no charge at this point to the, to the council. Um, other, the other areas, uh, we haven't really gotten into. We have been talking about them at our department head meetings on a, on a weekly basis. And so, uh, we anticipate having some more updates with you, uh, by the middle of summer on some of these, uh, target areas that are especially in the spring of 2019. So happy to answer any questions on the action plan update.
So we do have the, oh, somebody else said something. Um, the required consistency of amenities, light signs for development. And it does say spring of 2019. Is there anything that's been worked on or how that's going?
We haven't started a development since the adoption of it. So moving forward, yes. So the song concept that we see tonight will probably be a good place for us to start. But most of the developments that we're seeing right now are like phase two or final plating. So they're through preliminary at that point, which means their lighting and signage is usually determined by then.
Okay.
And to, to add to that, so Dan has been working with his group on creating kind of a standard detail of some of these. So like paint colors, type of retaining wall block, et cetera, so that we can build that into kind of one packet and hand it to the developer and then say like, this is what we require for streetlights. But more into the detail, not kind of looking back and say, what was the paint color that we use for this bench or et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And then for, um, the senior living facility, we had talked with them about the lighting features and they said that they were very open to it. Have we pushed that with them so that that's what's going to be happening there?
Yeah. So the lights in the parking lot will be the decorative one, similar to Levi Griffin.
Similar to why?
Uh, Levi Griffin, the park and ride.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question on that too, the consistency of amenities. And even though it's not the right time in the process, can we ask the developers to just consider it?
So typically through the preliminary, the preliminary plat application, there's a signage and lighting plan. So once that's approved, it's pretty tough to go back since it's bound with a resolution invested land rates. So I would say it's not typical that we could go back at that point.
Even if it's favorable to us? I mean, I realize we can't.
If it's favorable to us, I think.
Okay. I realize we can't, we can't, you know, uh, require them to, but if we could just ask if they would consider.
So that again, I think, if I just may.
Sure.
It, that's changing their entire plans that they've had in place. You know how long it takes to go from concept to final. That they've had in plan for a really long time. And I think it makes us look like we don't have our stuff together. That we're saying, oh, 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 wait, there's, remember what we approved?
Right. I think that too. It's just part of knowing that we're growing and, you know, we're evolving and wanting things to be consistent. It's just kind of a growth pain. But I'm also thinking just very little minor tweaks within a project, like. Maybe it's a green lamp post instead of a gray one. I mean, I.
What would the implications be? Let's just say we asked a developer to say, hey, can, would you consider this decorative lighting? And for some reason they say yes. What would that entail then to have that go in?
So it depends on where they are going out for bid. DR Horton on Monroe, they're doing the decorative lighting. So I don't think we're going to drive around and see five different types of lights. Depending on who the provider is, they typically have one or two that they can offer to the community. So if it's XL or MVAC. But in places that we know are going to be prominent, like Monroe Drive, we have pushed for the decorative lighting. I wouldn't say that anything that's come in, in the past couple of weeks has been atrocious by any means. Like the signs that are going up in Oak Tree or the stone, they're pretty high quality products. I'm not really concerned with what people are proposing right now.
That's good to know. That's comforting. Like, do you feel like everything out of blends together?
Yes.
Okay. If there was something that just really stuck out, that veered away from us having more of a consistent look, is it something where we could still ask them? I'd realize we don't, you know, have any weight in it or.
Right. We typically vet that too. We vet it through preliminary plat. We don't want suddenly an orange streetlight in a neighborhood that's had green typically. So it's part of our review. It's part of the preliminary plat. So something that we look at.
Okay.
But if there was something that we thought was completely out of line, we would address it.
Okay. Thank you.
We're all good?
Yep, all good.
All right. Um, I just wanted to say, I think this is great. I know in corporate world, we do this kind of stuff a lot and the follow-up is generally what's lacking. This plan, you're definitely not lacking in the follow-up and it, the same was true two years ago when we did. So I think this is really great. Thanks for continuing to raise this up in front of us, um, and keep checking in. Really appreciate it.
That's good.
Um, moving on to the city manager's report.
A couple of things. So as you know, we're getting ready to have the council consider issuing bonds for the 2019 project, Commerce Drive, the equipment certificate. Um, that'll be coming up at your June 17th meeting. Paul Steinman will kind of kick off that process. Uh, but as we were going through, um, our water planning and looking at, uh, future bonds, we want the, we were asking the council to consider adding, uh, the million dollars that you would need to construct the well. Uh, your alternative would be to not do that and then you'd go out in the spring of 2020 and, um, obtain funds to acquire or to buy the land, build the well, et cetera. The downside to that is you'd have to go out for another rating call, have bond councils. When it, when you issue bonds, it's probably anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000 in soft costs. And so there's a benefit to combining as many bond, many projects as you can into one issue. So, um, if you don't feel comfortable with adding that, we can certainly take it out and let that process develop more. Uh, but it, if, uh, on the cost side, if you feel comfortable enough, we'd, um, have Baker Tilly or what you know as Springstead come out and include that million dollars for the, the well construction as well.
Can we get options with that? If you, if it, if they do a proposal, could they have that split out or would it be all under one umbrella?
They split, they split each of the, the issuances out.
Right.
But it's, you, we need to decide either you want to do it or you don't. It's not, it can't be like an alternate, if that's what you're getting at.
No. If they, when they bring the, the bond issue or the proposal to us, do we have to have a decision for them to even bring us the, uh, the water treatment plant or the, the well project? Or?
What do you want that, what do you want the option to, like, what are you trying to learn from?
Do we have it as like a, instead of all bundled in one, can we have that split out?
And what would be the benefit to that?
How much extra it would cost to, if it's all going to be in one bond, I understand that. Or if we take it out to see what, how much that will actually cost us.
Well, we know how much it'll cost us as far, well, when you say cost, what do you, cost of to issue the bond or cost to pay back the million dollars?
Cost to issue the bond.
So they, I can give you a, I mean, I could give you an example of what it costs to issue a bond on its own based on past bond issuances.
Okay.
Between the 35 to 50,000.
Okay. And they're coming on the 17th?
Correct.
So we'd need to know by the 17th if we want to have the water?
Well, on the 17th, you could say, we want to do everything but the water.
Okay.
Or you could, frankly, you could decide not to do the equipment certificate as well. You could, I mean, you're really pot committed to the 2019 project and Commerce Drive because you've, you know, awarded bids. The equipment certificate and the water piece, you could say, we're just not going to do those. But you'll, so you'll see everything, uh, but it won't, they can't, they won't be able to split out the cost of the issuance by, like, bond. It's going to cost you the same amount of money to do two projects as it does four projects.
Got it.
So they're, I mean, the, the option is really, do you want to borrow the money for the well in this instance? Or the fire engine and the public services equipment? Those are, you know, you have a choices on all of them, but the, the equipment certificate and the, and the bond piece are the ones that you have the most flexibility on.
Thank you.
When do we see the first draft of the 2020 budget?
I want to say like early August.
Okay.
We know what the bond, so the, but that won't include water. So we'll do the enterprise funds later on in the fall.
Okay, okay.
We have, I've already, so I started working on the 2020 budget today. We have a pretty good idea of our 2020 debt service. Now they'll, just based on that.
That's what I'm getting at.
Based on that budget impact memo that Paul Steinman prepared. Now we'll fine tune those numbers once the actual bond sale comes in, then we'll have the official levy statement. But the, the difference on the well side is do you have? But the, the difference on the well side is, do you have, do you wanna get started on that in earnest this fall? Um, or do you wanna wait till the spring, and so like, as it relates to land, one of the things you could, we could do is if we found land, instead of purchasing it right away, depending upon the cost, we could enter into a, excuse me, a purchase agreement that would give us, we put a down payment on and give us, you know, three months to close or six months to close. It's just a matter of that additional cost to do another bond sale, we're, I think we'd be better ahead to just go ahead and include it, because it's, we know that we need the well. It's, again, it's not a decision you need to make tonight, but I wanted to, at a minimum, let you know that we're gonna include it, if you decide, hey, you know what? We're just, we don't have enough information on it, you know, Dan's working on some other stuff, we don't know, we don't have a land acquired yet. We know roughly what it'll cost to construct it and build a wellhouse and the pumps, et cetera. We feel pretty secure about the million-dollar number, but, you know, I can't be that cavalier to say, oh, a million dollars, go ahead, if you don't, you know, if you, you have to feel comfortable with it. Um, and it'll be a byproduct of, or it'll be a, a product of your rate study consideration. Um, also that'll happen later on, uh, you'll get the long-term plan, and that'll plug that into a rate analysis and update what we believe, um, rates are gonna, or need to be at. But, you know, regardless, I mean, the, what we need, what we have right now planted, we still need, we're still gonna need a well, we're still gonna need water treatment, um, and so these costs are gonna be coming, it's just a matter of we have time to prepare and plan for them.
And again, the debt service on that well portion would come from the utility fee, the, the utility fund.
Rates and connection charges, correct, not prop, not, no property taxes.
Right, okay, okay. Something else?
Then, uh, the other item, do you have something, Glenn? The legislature, uh, made some changes to local government aid, so the city annually receives, our last year, we received about a hundred and thirteen thousand in local government aid, it's basically money the city can use to defray costs and help support the operation of the system, or this, the, uh, the city. And based on the legislation, we're expecting to receive thirty-five thousand dollars more in local government aid for, uh, twenty twenty. So that'll be a welcome adjustment.
Was that thirty-five thousand dollars more or a hundred and forty thousand? Last year we received how much, a hundred and fourteen?
A hundred and thirteen.
Okay, was that thirty-five, you said thirty-five thousand more?
Right.
So it's just thirty-five thousand, or is it a hundred and?
Thirty-five thousand more than a hundred and thirteen, so like a, whatever that is.
Okay, so you didn't do the math for me?
One forty-eight.
One forty-nine, is that what I'm thinking? All right, thank you.
Yep. Then, uh, we're gonna be bringing a budget amendment to the council, for the council to consider, one of the pieces is, um, those pay grade adjustments, but some housekeeping items too, related to Southwest Prime, um, the council made a decision to fund that. We're actually running, so we had talked about fifteen thousand, uh, we're actually running between six to eight hundred dollars a month, so you're probably gonna be frankly under ten thousand, uh, but we haven't gotten into the summer months, so we are, we are gonna show a a budget amendment for a ten thousand dollar shift rather than the, the fifteen thousand, we think we're gonna be pretty good at that number. Uh, one of the other items kinda gets into kind of a deep dive into, um, the city finances, so and you'll hear this tonight, uh, during Justin's audit presentation, is the city has a fund balance, fund balance policy at fifty percent. And so anything between forty and fifty percent, you take and you move into the special capital project fund, that ten percent. And so in the, the last two years, um, we've made those adjustments, now the, related to the legislature, the city's been getting small cities account money, which is bro- money for streets, uh, street repair and improvements of about thirty-two thousand, which for two years is roughly about sixty-two, sixty-three thousand was the number. Well, the auditors were taking that money and looking at it as a unrestricted use and then showing that as a surplus, and that was going into the special capital fund, and so I've asked them to pull that money back out, because it, it's a restricted use, so we can't, cause we've used the special capital fund for Prime, right, for City Hall, et cetera, and so we need to pull that money back out. Um, and so it's gonna reduce the amount of what's in our special capital fund from what we were, had been, uh, looking at as about a hundred and twenty thousand, it's gonna bring that down to about sixty to fifty, sixty to fifty-five thousand in that range, uh, from memory. Um, so it's, it's not money lost, but it's not the, that surplus fund or the special capital isn't, isn't as big of a number as we had once thought. And then the, the final piece that you'll see in there is a, so traditionally, we've budgeted for street repairs uh, within the general fund operating, so it's aligned within the public services budget. And so when we started talking about this, taking this money from the small cities account, that sixty thousand, we initially had it in this street repair fund and that was sitting kinda by itself. And so like, we budgeted like sixty-one thousand, I think, Brian, for street repairs for twenty nineteen, so what happens if we spend fifty-five thousand of that, um, this remaining six thousand gets absorbed by the general fund, it can just be put into the special capital. But sometimes these projects tend to be larger, and so what we'd like to do is take that sixty-one thousand and every year transfer that into the street repair fund, and so that you can build basically a savings account to do bigger projects. Uh, because a mill and overlay, which we've kinda tried to switch over from doing the typical, um, seal coat project are expensive, and that way that can combine with the money that we're getting from the state, and we can build a fund to maybe handle some of the, of our streets that need more work, rather than having, if we get bids that aren't great and we end up only spending thirty of that sixty-one, that way by the end of the year, instead of having that absorbed in the general fund, it's already sitting in basically the savings account for street repairs, and so I'll explain that in some more detail, um, through a memo and a budget resolution for your next meeting, but just a little preview of, of what you can expect to see at your next meeting.
Sounds good. Any questions? Um, okay, moving on to council requests, Joy?
Nothing.
Don't worry.
I don't have anything.
What are they doing on forty coming into town?
XL is working on a gas main, so they're doing some soil borings and related work.
Got nothing else?
The only two things that I wanted to mention, um, so with the work sessions being taped, the one thing that we lose with them being taped is kinda that casual feel, which will all change on August first, our first meeting in August when we are back in City Hall and sitting around a conference ta- room table, but I just wanna really encourage these work sessions to continue to be more casual, I'm kinda like, what you said, this is a work session, we're here to discuss this, so, um, I just wanna encourage that, I know it's just a little bit more awkward with the separation, um, but I think all of that's worth it for the transparency and for the folks who are able to, who aren't able to make it, um, or who prefer to work from home, that would be all of them, since nobody's here. Um, and the only other thing that I wanted to mention is, coming into the busy summer season, um, I get it if folks aren't able to make commission meetings, I think something, um, that the new kinda pay structure, where we're not getting paid per meeting would allow us, is just a little bit more flexibility, so for whatever reason, you aren't able to make a commission meeting or something else that you've been assigned, shoot Brent an email and maybe he can send out, and I've asked him to send out an email to the group of, um, planning commission, next Thursday, Glenn can't make it, can anybody else go? Um, I think it would be great to give us some exposure to different committees and also give us some line of sight to the commissioners. Um, and I just think, feel that it's really important that those folks know that somebody is there to kinda provide the council and guidance, so certainly those meetings can take place without us, but I think it's just good to have somebody there, so. That's all I had.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion by council member Mock and a second by council member McKnight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes, thank you.